Good morning, everybody. Thanks for joining us today. Good morning, or I guess good afternoon if you're joining us from Europe. I know we have a few attendees probably joining us from Europe and possibly from Asia-Pacific. So I hope everybody's doing well today. We're here with David Kelly, President and CEO of Chikana Copper. He's going to be doing, obviously, a town hall presentation here, updating everybody on some of the latest drill results and, you know, the future plans going forward with some of the drilling. So we'll just give everyone a few more minutes to sign in, just, you know, wait a minute or two longer here as people filter in. So if you can hear me, assuming you can hear this, just maybe type something into the chat if you can. Just say good morning, say hi, let us know where you're from. We always like to see where everybody's from, so we'll just wait a few minutes here. Thanks, Michael. Good morning. Yeah, nice wheat field. It's a nice Saskatchewan wheat field I've got behind me. Hi, good morning, Daryl from San Diego. Good afternoon, Luis from Spain. Good to see you. Good morning, Jack from the Big Apple. Hope you're doing well. Good afternoon, Jesus. Good to see you, joining us from Madrid in Spain. Good afternoon, Paul from sunny Scotland. Right on. Jason, good morning. Jack. From Colorado, Jacques, good morning. Good to see everybody. Okay, so just a few quick items for those of you that have never been on one of these webinars. To your right, if you look sort of to the right of your screen, you're going to see four tabs. One of them says the chat, so if you've been, obviously, if you've been saying good morning, you've obviously found that one. If you have any questions, however, for David during the presentation, we ask you to put them in there. You're free to put those questions in whenever you want, you know, during the presentation or afterwards. So all the questions go in there. Now, if somebody happens to ask a similar question to what you asked, you can always upvote the question. So the questions that have the most votes get pushed towards the top and will likely answer those ones first. So if you think it's someone's asked a good question, or it's a question you wanted to ask and someone's already asked it, you can just upvote it. The other thing I'll draw your attention to on the right-hand side, there'll be a handouts tab. I've just shared, or you should see a red dot show up that shows that the presentation that you're going to watch or see today has been shared, so you can actually download that presentation if you want at your convenience. So I think with that, we'll turn it over to David. Take it away, David, joining us from Colorado this morning, and I'm going to go off-screen here.
Thank you very much, John. It's a pleasure to be back and give an update. You know, we've been working really hard in Peru with the drilling program, so it's an exciting opportunity for us to share what we've learned so far. This is a really, really fascinating project. I mean, geologically, I don't think it could be more interesting. We still have a lot to learn about the project, but that's what discoveries are about. You know, discoveries are very rare, they're hard to make, and when you get into one, you're on the steep end of the learning curve normally until you really get on top of it, I guess, in terms of understanding what's controlling the mineralization. And I'd say we're well on our way. We've had some fantastic results in the drilling that we had completed before we started this drill program, and now we're in the middle of a 15,000-meter drill program that's fully funded and testing some very, very exciting targets that I'll take you through today. Just the cautionary statement, I will be making a number of forward-looking statements, so please be aware of that. The, you know, the highlight for me in terms of talking to new investors is to really point out, you know, the fact that we have a very strong management team. I'll show a slide about some of the principles in the company shortly. But, you know, that's a critical aspect of deciding on making an investment in a junior company like Chikana. I'll talk a little bit about our share structure. We have a very, very strong shareholder base, including Goldfields, which came in last year, and they're very excited about this project. They see great potential ahead for us, and they're very supportive of the program that we're running. I'll talk a little bit about Peru too, because for some of you that may not know about Peru, Peru is a great country to be located in. It's a mining country first and foremost, and that's a really important aspect of any exploration project. You really want to be putting your money into a project that has the potential to become a mine, and Peru is very supportive of the mining industry and foreign investment coming into the country. I'll talk a lot about the Solidad project. I know there's been, you know, a lot of information we've put out over the last few years since we started drilling. In 2017, we've completed over 30,000 meters of drilling. We've done extensive surface exploration to define the targets that we're now drilling, and it's a very, very exciting project. And it says right there, high-grade copper, gold, and silver. We have very high grades in all three of those metals. If you're an investor that's looking at trying to decide between putting your money in a copper or a base metal investment or precious metals, this is a great investment for you because you get all three metals at very significant grades. Some of the brecha pipes are precious metal-rich, some of the pipes are more copper or copper-silver-rich. They all have generally a mix of all three metals, but the ratios change, and this is a function of the zonation that we see within the brecha pipe. So it's a really fascinating project from a geologic standpoint, but from an investment standpoint, it also gives you that diversification between copper and precious metals. I'll talk about our drill program that's underway right now. We started that August 15th, and we're well into it. I've got some exciting results to share with you today. So just on our share structure, you can see our chart there. We've recovered from the lows of the onset of COVID-19. I think we reached the low of about seven and a half cents, and we recently hit our 52-week high of 80 cents. There's been a bit of a pullback that we see, but it's by and large, it's kind of along that trend of essentially revaluing the company, you know, to give us a sound base to be working from. I still think we're way undervalued based on the discovery we've made and the upside potential there. But you can see the, you know, the share structure there. Goldfield sits at right, just below 17%. They're a very supportive shareholder. They do not have a future right to the asset or a first right of refusal, but obviously, they're very excited about the project to the point that they came in and put $8 million into the company last year after doing a very, very deep dive on the company and very thorough due diligence. The rest of the share structure shown there, management insiders own a very healthy 18%, and then we have a very solid institutional shareholder base. The management I mentioned, three of our five directors are geologists. I'm shown there with John Black on my left and Doug Kirwin on the right. John and Doug have both had very distinguished careers, very successful careers in discovery. John is the current CEO of Regulus Resources, another great copper story and great copper investment opportunity in Peru. If you haven't heard about that, I would certainly encourage you to look into that. Doug Kirwin is a world-renowned expert, especially in these terminaling brecha pipes, and that was really key for us in recognizing the untapped potential of this project, but also, you know, how best to explore the project. There's a multitude of different aspects of the project regarding upside potential, but right now, we're focused on these terminaling brecha pipes because they're numerous, they're high-grade, and we have a lot of knowledge and expertise within the company that allows us to pursue, you know, the exploration of these brecha pipes. So just a location map of Peru. We're showing some of the largest mines in Peru that are currently operating. We're located in just north of central Peru. It's within the Ancas province. It's a historic mining province. I consider it one of the premier mining provinces in Peru because of its history in mining. The Antamina Mine, which is the largest operating mine in Peru, is located 65 kilometers to the east in the same province, and then Barrick's Piorina Mine is located just 35 kilometers to the north, within the Cordillera Negra, which is the mountain range which we're located. You can see Peru is extensively endowed with a variety of different deposit types. We're within the Miocene Belt, Miocene Mineral Belt of Peru, and that's known for its giant high sulfuration deposits, epithermal deposits, and porphyry copper gold deposits as well. The incentive to explore in Peru is well-established. In addition to the geology, which I mentioned, that's first and foremost. Obviously, you have to have the geologic endowment to have as an incentive to go into a country, but then you also have to have a supportive government. You have to have a strong mining law that encourages foreign investment and a tax scheme that's also supportive of developing successful operations. Peru is well-established in this regard. It's the second-largest copper producer in the world. It's the largest gold producer in Latin America, and I think a very impressive statistic is the fact that it's the fifth-largest investment country after Canada, US, Chile, and Australia. So it sits very highly in the list of countries that do invest a lot in mining, and I think that bodes well for Peru's future. One of the reasons Peru is attractive as a mining state or mining country is the fact that generally, mining costs are much lower in Peru, and that often has to do ultimately with the energy cost structure in the country. And Peru has both hydroelectric power as well as oil and gas, and so the energy costs in Peru are quite a bit lower than many other countries, and that really creates a foundation for developing large mining operations. The other aspect that's worth noting with respect to potential investments in junior companies is the commodity mix of the company. You know, we're focused on copper. If Solidad becomes a mine, it will be a copper mine. Cacapirat is the main mineral, main copper mineral in the deposits at Solidad. So, you know, we envision that there will be a flotation circuit that would produce a copper concentrate, but there's also gold and silver that goes with that, and I'll be talking about that more in the future. But copper itself has a great fundamental. If you look forward at the supply and demand aspects of copper, it was good even before the onset of the push for green energy systems and electric vehicles, and that just makes it even more of a sought-after metal. We think the future is bright even without that, but that adds additional pressure on the supply of copper. And, you know, we know that copper is a metal that's been, you know, undersupplied or will be undersupplied, and that has to do with a number of different factors. There's been an underinvestment in copper exploration, so there's fewer projects that are going into development. A lot of the mines that are in production right now are dwindling in terms of their production. Oftentimes, we see declining grades of the product, and, you know, that relates to reduced production. We also see a number of mines that are closing, so the supply side of it is going down while the demand, projected demand is going up. So that's going to create a very critical point for copper, and we do expect to see the copper price to increase in the future. Now, we are operating a drill program now in Peru, and that was after some very careful planning. The response to COVID-19 by the Peruvian government was very strong. Initially, you know, they declared a state of emergency on March 15th and shut everything down. They shut down their international borders. They had very strict protocols for people to follow. And I think initially, that effort was very effective, but then, as the COVID-19 pandemic, you know, dragged on and people were quarantined and unable to move about in Peru, it created other issues. Much of Peru is, there's a very high population of poor people in Peru. Those people do not have refrigerators in their houses, and so they have to go to the markets. And we saw that there was a large uptick in the spread of the coronavirus through the marketplaces in Peru. And, you know, today, we know that Peru is one of the countries most affected by the spread of COVID-19. At the same time, the government recognized that it was critical to restart the economy, and they see mining as a critical aspect of that, so they developed a plan to allow mining to restart. It started with the largest operations and then transitioned to medium and smaller-size operations, and then exploration programs were also included in that. So we were allowed to restart our exploration program at Solidad, and we did so after very careful consideration and development of a work plan that incorporates COVID-19 work protocols. And, you know, so far, our program has gone smoothly. Obviously, we monitor this on a daily basis. We're very concerned about the health of not only our employees and contractors, but the local communities in which we work. So I'll move on now and talk a little bit about the project. I know this is a review for some of you, for the newer investors. The map on the right shows our land position. It's just over 3,000 hectares. There are three colors to that map: blue, pink, and green, and those represent different underlying ownership. You can see the location of the deposits, which are the terminaling brecha pipes, are shown by the circles and the stars. The stars represent the surface expression of what we think are blind brecha pipes. And we have, just looking at the circles, we have about 23 confirmed brecha pipes that crop out at surface. We've already discovered a blind brecha pipe in our drilling, so we know they exist, and we, you know, expect that that number will increase as we progress our exploration. Now, initially, our drilling was limited to the blue area. We received a final initiation of activities for a permit that was granted previously to drill in the pink area, and so now we're testing a new round of targets that had not been drilled before. All the brecha pipes that have been drilled are shown either in green or in yellow there. We're currently drilling on the Paloma East brecha pipe. It's shown within the pink area, and we're exploring the Paloma East, Paloma West area. And after this, we'll be moving down to the Wanquarama Brecha Complex, also shown in that pink area. And I have some slides that'll show some more detail of that. We've had some really excellent results so far. I mean, if you put all the drilling of Brecha Pipe 1 together, all the mineralized brecha intercepts, and that is where we found a blind brecha pipe. So there's actually two brecha pipes at Brecha 1. There's the one that crops out at surface, and then there's the blind brecha pipe. But if you put all the drilling together, the copper equivalent grade of the mineralized brecha is just below 2.9% copper equivalent, or about 4.4 grams per tonne gold equivalent. And I'll show us the actual grades in a minute, so you can get a feel for what the grade profile looks like. We're currently drilling a 15,000-meter program. We've started a 15,000-meter program. It's fully funded. We just put out our first set of drill results on that, and there will be a continual release of information for the next several months as we continue through that drill program. Now, I'm going to spend the last part of the talk talking about the upside potential. I list a number of different upside potential concepts there. The fact that we have multiple pipes, and we're going to find more pipes because we know that blind pipes do exist. The vertical depth of these brecha pipes is really intriguing. We've never seen the bottom of a brecha pipe yet, even though we've drilled 900-meter holes on the property. And in comparable projects within South America, we know that these brecha pipes can extend to considerable depth, even depths of up to 2 kilometers. We know that the pipes are very close together. The aspect of brecha pipes coalescing at depth is definitely is something that we think will happen. In fact, we think that's happening right now in our drilling at Paloma East. We have a very impressive high-grade copper event. It's a late copper event. I call it copper upgrading. I'll show you some slides of this. It's very impressive. The grades are spectacular, and we actually see that process happening inside the brecha pipes as well as outside the brecha pipes. Just a view of the north half of the property. This is not showing the southern half. This shows the area of the previous map where the pink concessions were, and then the top of the hill is where the blue area underlies. The blue concessions are part of the project. And you can see there again in red, it's showing where we've drilled brecha pipes. We're currently working in the area of Paloma East and Paloma West, the two green circles there. And after that, we'll be moving down to the Wanquarama Brecha Complex, also shown by the green shade. An important aspect here, there's an operating lead-zinc silver mine immediately to the east of the property. This is one of four mines active in the Aihai-Ticapampa district. And that is a statement really about infrastructure. There is public roads, there's great access, there's plentiful water in this area. These mines operate on grid power. Peru has a very well-established network of electrical transmission throughout the Andes, and it's well-established in this area. So from an infrastructure standpoint, it's very well situated. Also, from a topographic standpoint, there's about 500 meters of relief from the lowest brecha pipes up to the top, and that means that you can access these brecha pipes by driving horizontal or slightly decreasing adits or tunnels into the hillside to get access to working faces on the brecha pipes. The proximity and closeness of the brecha pipes is also an important factor because it means a single tunnel could drift past multiple of these brecha pipes, giving you access to the different terminaling brecha pipes for mining. So we think this is going to bode well for future planning in terms of how these brecha pipes might be exploited. I mentioned some of the grades on the different brecha pipes, and these are shown here. We've drilled, our initial drill program focused on six brecha pipes, and four of those brecha pipes contain very significant mineralization. Brecha Pipe 1, 5, and 6 have had considerable drilling done on them. Brecha Pipe 7 has only had four drill holes put into it, but it is mineralized. It does show the characteristics of what we're looking for, which is evidence of mineralization, evidence of high grade, and some indication that the geometry is going to be big enough to develop tons from. Obviously, it needs more drilling to be able to make that call. But you can see that there's variability within the brecha pipes, and there's variability between the brecha pipes. Brecha 1 has very strong grades in gold, copper, and silver. We see gold grades ranging from 1 to 4 grams. Copper grades are often, you know, right around 1%, and the silver grades are, you know, between 30 and 60 grams. So a very nice mix of all three metals. Brecha 5 is, shows very consistent good grades in gold, you know, 1 to 1.8 grams. Copper grades slightly lower, 0.5 to 0.7. It's kind of fairly typical, except certain zones do have higher grades within Brecha 5, and then silver grades that are around 30. So you can see there's variability, and we know that this is a function of where we're at. These brecha pipes are zoned vertically and laterally, and so depending on where your drilling is concentrated and what elevation your drilling is located within the brecha pipe will somewhat determine what kind of metal values you get for these three different metals. The geometry of the brecha pipes is also very important. Obviously, you want your mineralization contained within a volume of rock that is amenable to mining. The three-dimensional diagram on the left shows a view of Brecha Pipe 1. I mentioned that Brecha Pipe 1 is where we've had a blind brecha pipe discovery. The brecha pipe is shown there. It's about 125 meters below surface, and it's about 40 meters north of the main zone. And we found it just by drilling through the main zone and continuing a drill hole. We clipped the very top of the brecha pipe. It had a very high-grade intercept. It was about 12 meters of 13% copper equivalent. We subsequently drilled beneath that and tracked the brecha pipe at depth, so you can see the shape of both of those brecha pipes there. But one of the really important aspects of these brecha pipes is, due to the way they formed, these are brecha pipes that did not erupt at surface, so they don't have these outward flaring type of geometries that you often see with diatrium-type breches. These are conical-shaped brecha pipes because they stopped at some depth beneath the surface. It might have been 1 or 2 kilometers beneath the surface, and that, the fact that they didn't breach the surface controls their geometry. So they actually do come to a point, much like the blind brecha pipe shows in that diagram there. And one of the important aspects of that is that the brecha pipes get bigger at depth, and we've seen this in essentially all of the brecha pipes where we've done significant amounts of drilling. We see this increasing shape going at depth. The example that's shown here shows the surface area at 60 meters depth in the main zone. It's about 2,600 square meters, and another 100 meters deeper, it's 5,400 square meters. So that's an important aspect of the upside potential. If your brecha pipes are getting bigger at depth, it means that the potential for adding tons as you go deeper increases. So we think that's an important part of the upside potential. I'll talk now about the rocks on the right. These are two examples of mineralization that we see. Essentially, we see two different types of mineralization. We see sulfide-cemented brecha, and the core, the piece of core on the left shows that you can see the class are the rock fragments, which is essentially a brecha is just a collection of fragmented rock. It includes rock fragments of different compositions and different shapes, different orientations, but the class in this example are of the original rock, and the matrix or the space between the class is cemented by the sulfides, and the sulfides is where the copper, gold, and silver are hosted. On the right is a totally different style of mineralization. This is that example of the late-stage copper replacement, where a copper-rich fluid comes through and it completely wipes out the previous mineralogy. It maintains the texture of the rock. You can see, in this case, it's not a shingle brecha like we see on the left. It's a mosaic brecha. It just means that the shape of the class are more equant or blocky-shaped. But the impressive part about this piece of core is that you can see a replacement front that comes across the rock all the way to the lower part of the piece of core where the replacement front stops. And so that's a very impressive style of mineralization. It's very high-grade. We've seen it in a number of the brecha pipes we drilled, and this is another part of the upside potential that we see on the project. Now, I'm going to jump into, I know some of you that are current shareholders, you're probably more interested in hearing about the latest results that we've gotten, and they are very exciting. I'm going to take you through kind of what we go through as exploration geologists when we're exploring a property like this. You know, the first thing you try to do on a project is get out and map the property in detail. You want to know what the surface geology is telling you. You also sample the surface, and we do a number of different types of sampling programs. We often will start on a reconnaissance nature. We'll do stream sediments, looking at the metal values and the minerals that sit within the drainage around the property. We often do blanket soil coverage, so a systematic grid. And then, of course, the geologists are most interested in sampling the rocks because it tells them more about the geology. And that's what we're showing here. We're showing the surface geology around Paloma East and Paloma West, and largely, it's covered by soil and vegetation. There's not a lot of outcrop in this particular area, but where we do have outcrop, the geologists have taken samples, and where you see a symbol with a magenta color, those are all samples greater than 1 gram per tonne gold. And you can see a very tight clustering in the upper right where Paloma East is. That's the outcropping brecha pipe that we see at surface. It's got a diameter of about 23 meters. In the lower-left part of the map, you see another outcropping zone of brecha. This is Paloma West. Again, multiple samples greater than 1 gram. Again, multiple samples greater than 1 gram per ton gold. But we also see a lot of gold in between. And this is along small outcrop, small exposures. In one case, there's a small trench there, historic trench, that was made. And it gives us glimpse of the geology in between these two areas. But really, you know, we we know a lot about Paloma East, where it crops out at surface, and Paloma West. But in between, there's not a lot more that's known. So from a drilling standpoint, really, all you can say is, you know, let's set up and drill a hole across this 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 brecha pipe feature. We have no idea what the depth extent is. So we simply assume that if the brecha pipe continues at depth at the same shape and size it is at surface, then we might have a brecha pipe that's 25 meters in diameter going at depth. And that's what we're showing on the right side. Planned drill hole 133 going across a projected brecha pipe that might be about 25 meters in diameter. And if we go to the next diagram, we'll see after drilling three holes, the diameter of that brecha pipe was considerably larger than we had anticipated. Again, this is what we've seen time and time again. The brecha pipes are getting bigger at depth. In this case, the brecha pipe is getting to a diameter of about 50 meters depth, 50 meters wide or a diameter of 50 meters across at 150 meters depth. And if you if you double the diameter of a cylinder-shaped body, you're quadrupling the volume of that body. So even a change in the diameter from 25 meters to 50 meters is very significant from a volume standpoint. And you can imagine if you then go from 50 to 75 to 100 or even larger, the tons will add up quickly on these brecha pipes, especially if you consider the depth extent. And as I mentioned before, we've never seen the bottom of a brecha pipe yet. We simply drill as much as we can be effective from surface. And that's generally in the 300 to 400 meter range. Beyond that, you're drilling very deep holes. Oftentimes, you happen to step further back and drill longer sections of the of the wall rock. And at some point, you just have to say that's for future drilling from underground. And, you know, that's another program that we're talking about internally is how we can extend these brecha pipes at depth by getting access from underground. So this is what the brecha pipe looked like. Also, on the left is the plan map. And you can see we're showing the initial surface footprint of the brecha pipe at surface, the 25 meters of exposed brecha pipe. But then we're now showing the modeled shape, which is the shape shown on the right in red, projected to surface. So you can start seeing the the footprint of this brecha as we're going as we're going deeper. It's getting bigger. Now, if we look at the the grades from the first three drill holes that we we released recently, you can see it really answers that these three drill holes answered the first three questions we have on any target that we test. The first question is, is it mineralized? Does it have grades that are interesting? Second question we ask is, is there indication of high grade? Because we know that we we've seen some really, really spectacular grades in some of these brecha pipes. But the 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 high grades are not just ubiquitous throughout the brecha pipes. Oftentimes, they're concentrated on the margins, or sometimes they're going from one margin across to another margin. They're basically tracking fluid pathways. And, you know, the mineralization hosted in these brecha pipes is a result of a hot saline hydrothermal fluid. It's 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 capable of carrying very high concentrations of metal. And when that fluid either cools or gets diluted, it precipitates those metals in the in the in the space of the rock where it has transcended. And oftentimes, it's in these permeable zones within these breches. And so we can we can track these fluid pathways. It's basically, once you get a hit on a high-grade zone, then you drill beneath it. And if you miss it, then you drill to the side and you find it. And once you find it and track it out, you're able to go and and map out these zones of high grade. And that's that's what we did with Brecha 1. People ask, why did you drill so much on Brecha 1? That's exactly why we drilled so much. We had some very high grades. And we knew that if we drilled higher density around those high grades, we could map out these zones. And that's important from a resource estimate, but it's also important for being able to track those high grades at depth. So the second question, do you have high grades in the brecha pipes? In this case, yep, we've got nice runs of mineralization. It's mineralized. We have good examples of high grade. We have 15 meters of 2% copper. We have zones, you know, another 15 meters with point almost 0.9 copper and 0.5 grams gold. Those are really good grade intercepts within much longer grades of of more moderate or much longer intercepts of moderate grades. So, you know, that's the second question. We have high grade. And then the third question is, what is the geometry doing? And as I showed in the previous diagram, the geometry is getting better. So even after just three drill holes, we can say that this brecha pipe has a very good upside potential for for continuing the drilling. Here's some of the rocks that we see. Oftentimes, the the near-surface section of brecha, usually down to about 30 or 40 meters depth, is oxidized. And you can see the very oxidized nature in photograph A. That's the 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 shingle chaotic shingle brecha that's strongly oxidized. Oftentimes, these types of oxidized sections contain very good gold grades. And we've seen that if I just go back to the previous slide. I believe it was this section here. Let me see here, 9 meters of 1 and 1/2 grams gold in the oxidized portion of of the brecha pipe. So again, very good gold at top at surface. You can see the shiny gold mineral on the right. And in photograph B, that's chalcopyrite, pure chalcopyrite, intermixed with with pyrite, very strong mineralization. You can see in photograph C, in the shallower zones, we do get evidence of supergene enrichment. The the bluish mineral here is kovallite coatings on the chalcopyrite. We also see chalopaside is very common in that supergene enrichment zone. And then as we get deeper, we start seeing some of these other styles of mineralization where the class themselves are getting completely replaced. In this case, this is pyrite. This hasn't seen the upgrading event from the copper. It's it's likely that we just in this particular spot, we've seen the strong pyrite mineralization, but we haven't seen the copper fluid come through this section. And we know the copper is there because we see it right here. So it's a matter of finding where those permeable pathways and the copper-bearing fluids were moving through the rock. And and that's where you have the possibility of finding very high grades of copper. So you can imagine what where we were at after three or the first three or four drill holes. So we had this shape that was developing. We had the surface outcrop, 25 meters diameter. We have this projected shape from the first three or four drill holes, which shows a diameter, you know, of about 50 meters. And then we wanted to drill to the southwest because we hadn't really defined this southwest margin. And we expected hole 137 was going to come out of out of the brecha at about 170 meters depth down hole, okay? And we got to that depth, and we were still in brecha, and we kept drilling, and we kept drilling, and we kept drilling. And and we didn't come out of brecha until 627 meters depth. And that put us directly beneath Paloma West at a depth of about 530 meters below surface, below Paloma Paloma West. So that was that completely threw threw the book out on the shape of the brecha body that we were drilling. We obviously, we're not showing the shape of the brecha here because we just have one drill hole through it. We really don't have the control on on the shape of the brecha from just one drill hole. There's a lot more drilling that needs to be done. But it's a very impressive extent of brecha. It essentially shows us this aspect. Or, you know, our our working model now is that these are two brecha pipes at surface, and they coalesce at depth into one much larger brecha body. This is something we've thought from the very beginning that we we might see or are likely should see. So this is a very, very exciting development for us. You know, obviously, a lot more drilling is going to need to be done. And we are continuing to drill in this area. And there will be news coming out on additional drill holes and additional development of of the shape and our thoughts on on the the size and extent of the brecha here. But it's a very, very positive development for us to see this broad extent of brecha. Now, I'm just going to go back to this location map just to reemphasize where we're at. We're talking about we've been talking about the Paloma East and Paloma West area shown here on the map under the letters PE and PW. Now, after we finish our scout drilling at Paloma East and Paloma West, we'll move down to the Wan Karama Brecha Complex. I I just say a little bit about a kind of our strategy when we're drilling is to put a few drill holes into the target and answer those three questions. Is it mineralized? Is there indication of high grade? And does the shape look encouraging? Once we've done that, you know, our view is we should move on and do that for another target and answer those questions and continue to do that. And what we're trying to do is set ourselves up for the definition drilling program. We did that at Brecha 7, four drills, looks good, encouraging, saw some decent indications of high grade, good good and values for in that case, particularly for very high in silver. We'll come back to it at some point. But we want to come back to the 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 highest potential brecha pipes based on this scout drilling. So our plan at Paloma East drill, you know, a a certain number of holes to answer those questions, move to Paloma West, do the same. And then we'll move to Wan Karama. And once we've done that scout drilling, then we'll come back and decide where to spend the remainder of the meters that we have in this planned 15,000-meter drill program on infill or definition drilling. Now, one of the targets we're extremely excited about is the Wan Karama Brecha Complex, in part because of the 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 extent of brechiation at surface. It's about 200 meters across. It's five principal brecha bodies exposed at surface. The the rock between the 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 breches is poorly exposed. Where we do see it exposed, it's intensely altered to sericite with quartz and tourmaline throughout it. So we think that this is one large brecha mass, or perhaps it's like Paloma East and West, where we have brecha bodies exposed at surface, much like the fingers on your hand. And as you go deeper, it becomes one large brecha body. It's interesting that the extent of the lateral extent of brecha that we've drilled in hole 137 at Paloma is about the same lateral extent that we see at surface here. So, you know, it may be perhaps it's a similar-sized brecha system. Obviously, we don't know because we haven't drilled there yet. Now, there has been historic mining here. There are two underground adits. There's one that's shown in the just left of the principal brecha pipe HBX1. It's about 170 meters long. We've sampled, channel sampled the inside on both sides of the tunnel here. And you can see the bright colors, the yellows, greens, and magentas. Those are areas where you can see the the brecha. And so it basically confirms the the size of HBX1 from a from a strike distance across to the north. There's also a smaller added in HBX2, and there's an inset map there that shows the gold grades. Again, magenta is over 1 gram. So very strong gold enrichment in the in the breches at surface at at Wan Karama. So this is this is why we're so excited about Wan Karama, the the lateral extent of brecha exposed at surface and the strong gold enrichment we see in surface rock chip and channel samples. Now, I've talked about this late-stage copper replacement. This was some of the drilling that we did last year. We went back and and tried to track Brecha 5 to a deeper extent. And what we found was was something really interesting. First of all, we confirmed that the brecha pipe, which was plunging to the east, actually did a 90-degree turn and started plunging to the north. And within that change in direction, we also got a change in the style of mineralization. And we we hit some very high-grade copper within that zone. And it's shown here, you can see at 417 meters depth, we have copper that's within the matrix of the brecha. So I still think that this is a replacement type of feature, but the the previous sulfides that were in this rock, probably mostly pyrite, was in the matrix of the brecha. But as we go deeper, you can see the entire brecha gets wiped out, both the class and the matrix. And this is a very, very strong, high-grade style of of mineralization. These are the kind of things that we have to track with our drilling, okay? And it is a drill-intensive type of exploration process. There's really no way that we found. We've tested borehole geophysics. We've done some other geophysics. Really, this is down to drilling. This is the best way to try to track these zones. But there's good incentive to want to do that. Now, the last the last point to make on this slide is the the two core boxes on on the bottom of this slide show very high-grade mineralization outside the brecha pipes. It's very similar to what you see above in the brecha. It is a late-stage copper replacement. But this is happening outside the brecha pipes. And I can't emphasize the importance of that enough. These brecha pipes are what we focus on. 90% of our drilling is going into the brecha pipes. But occasionally, we'll let a drill hole run outside the brecha pipe. And sometimes, we hit these really spectacular zones of mineralization. You can see the core box on the right. That's 5 and 1/2 meters of 4.6 grams gold, 5.3% copper, and 275 grams silver outside the brecha. So again, we have no idea how much of this mineralization sits outside the brecha. It's obviously got is something that needs to be focused on in the future, and we will do that. But it's it's a very, very impressive style of mineralization that, you know, creates a lot of excitement when you think about the upside potential. We also see some very interesting veins. People are always asking us about the porphyry potential of this project. And it's not something that's been our focus. We do make note of features like this. We see these veins that when you show these to porphyry geologists, they look at this and go, yep, that looks like a porphyry vein to me. We see center-lined quartz veins with molybdenite or other sulfides. We haven't seen potastic alteration yet, at least not convincingly, and certainly not pervasive. Potastic alteration is a higher temperature alteration. It's what you should see as you go deeper and get hotter and closer to the intrusive source. So again, that tells us that we're still very high in the system. We do expect to see that type of alteration as we go deeper. And we are paying attention to these types of these types of veins and these types of features going forward. There are a number of people that have been to the project or looked at the drill core, some 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 notable porphyry experts. And they do see they do think there's potential here for porphyries. Interestingly, our own chairman, Doug Kerwin, does not believe that this is a porphyry-related tourmaline brecha system. There are two types of tourmaline brecha systems out there, some that the one type that is related to porphyry porphyry systems. And Los Sofatos is the granddaddy of all. You know, it's it's over a billion tons of 1.4% copper tourmaline brecha pipe related to a porphyry environment. And then there are other districts where the tourmaline brecha pipes are not related to a porphyry. So the jury is still out on this. I personally believe that there's potential for a porphyry here. It's not the focus of what we're doing now. We think this project will be very well-served by getting a high-grade resource on multiple brecha pipes. We're learning a lot about the geology by drilling these brecha pipes. So it's not to say that we're not focusing on it or are not paying attention to what the porphyry potential might be. But we're staying focused on our number-one objective, which is to put out a robust resource on the tourmaline brecha pipes to start with and continue the exploration on many of these extra or additional upside aspects of the project. I wanted to come back to this slide. I know I've I've shown it before. It it kind of conveys the the very high-level thinking that we have on how you might mine these brecha pipes. The we've had a number of mining engineers weigh in on the project and look at this. And they they essentially all concur that sub-level mining of individual brecha pipes is is the way to go. It is a fairly selective mining technique that can generate significant volumes. And then if you add multiple brecha pipes, you can you can even up upscale your volume production beyond that or even mining multiple zones within a brecha pipe. But when you get intercepts like 172 meters from surface of 0.34 copper and 0.31 gold with a little bit of silver, that starts to make you think that, well, perhaps some of these brecha pipes could be mined[1778.18] that starts to make you think that, well, perhaps some of these Brecha pipes could be mined from open pit in the top part of the, of the extent of mineralization. And if you have multiple Brecha pipes or they coalesce at depth and both of that, those Brecha pipes or that coalescence zone could be taken out with the pit, then maybe that's another type of mining that could be considered here. It's very early days and we have, you know, a lot more drilling and exploration do, to do to get to that point. But it, it's certainly something that, that we keep in the back of our mind. So I think that's a real positive development in thinking about solely that going forward. So just coming back, this is mainly focusing on the viewers here today that are not investors. Again, if you're thinking about putting your money in copper, putting your money in a precious metal investment, put it in Chocana because it's a great exposure to both copper and gold and silver. I think our, our management team speaks for itself, at least I hope it does. We're very dedicated to making this project successful and we're working very hard. And I can't give enough praise to our Peru team. They're operating completely on their own. I'm really, really proud of the team that we put together. They're doing a great job, especially in these very, very difficult times of operating, not only trying to keep the, the people safe under normal mining, drilling, exploration conditions, but also during the pandemic. So I just want to emphasize how proud I am of our team down in, in Peru. Again, Ancash, I couldn't pick a better spot in Peru, all of Peru, that I'd, I'd rather be than Ancash. It's a great mining province and the, the, the local regulators have been very supportive. I might also add too, the local community support has been really excellent for us. And, you know, we've tried to, you know, return, you know, our support to them. We're very concerned about the well-being of the local communities. There's two small communities adjacent to the project in the larger town of Iha. And we've had a very proactive program during COVID nineteen of, of providing medical, medical equipment, even in conjunction with our partner Goldfields and donating test kits and medical equipment and staples and, and food and, and cleaning supplies. So it's a very important part of our program. Obviously, the employment that we provide is, is a, is a good benefit to the, the communities, but our support goes well above and beyond that. So I'll just leave it there. We're in the middle of a very exciting fifteen thousand meter drill program. And we look forward to produce our, you know, releasing more results on the program as we go through and happy to take any questions from, from the audience today. Thank you very much.
With those, and I have a couple of questions as well if we have time, but we'll start with Anthony. His question is, can you give a timeline? And he doesn't specify timeline on what exactly, so I'm not sure if he means the, the drilling or results or maybe when you might drill three three one oh one, it's kind of a general question.
Yeah, John, so the timeline, you know, drill results will be coming out on a regular basis. You know, it, it's dependent on getting the samples logged and, and transported down to, to the lab in Lima and then turnaround time. But, you know, we expect to be putting out drill results on, you know, on a regular basis, every three to five weeks, something like that. In terms of the resource, we set a deadline for ourselves of end of March to get the first maiden resource out on the project. And I think, you know, as long as COVID nineteen doesn't interfere with the progress, if we can continue to, to drill the way we have been drilling, we likely will add a second drill rig in the future. And then, you know, that will help expedite the drill results and put that with the previous drilling. And, and our goal is to get that resource out by March of twenty twenty-one.
Okay, Anthony, I hope that answers your question. The next question's from Victor. He's asking, and there's a word in here I'm not familiar with. Is there any radial, R E D I A L, radial mineral veins? Those veins could be high-grade but narrow, that was his question.
I think he's saying radial veins. And it's interesting, we see sheeted veining. They are, they're, they're more, they're more concentric. There, we see the sheeted veining going around the, the Brecha pipes. And generally those are quartz, pyrite, tourmaline, they generally don't carry much grade. But we do regularly intersect what we call ESMs, they're mineralized structures. And we've hit some very impressive mineralized structures in the Paloma area. Those are very important from an exploration standpoint because we can track those structures back. And oftentimes those mineralized structures go right into Brecha, okay? So from an exploration standpoint, it's important. But they're also important from a potential mining standpoint because some of these mineralized structures, we see significant widths, like, you know, projected. If they're vertical veins, you know, true width on the order of six or nine meters wide. And they can be very strongly mineralized. And they also mine veins next door in the, in the Lencuna operation. So we know that veins in the district can be very important. And yes, that is another upside potential for the project.
Okay, and the next question is from Luis. He's asking about the copper gold correlation. How much of the gold, I, I think he means how much of the gold is expected to go with the copper concentrate?
Yeah, it's a real interesting question. We expected to see a very strong correlation between gold and copper because oftentimes in copper gold systems, especially magnetic systems, they are correlated. But in this case, our gold is, is actually in, we see free gold. And we see it, and I'm just going to jump to a slide here real quick because we do have a slide on this. We see free gold in, in two different forms. We see it, just to show that slide there, a very spectacular example of free gold cutting across calcopyrite, which is the main copper mineral, and pyrite and other sulfide minerals there. It's a very late copper, our late gold event. And then on the right, we see free gold blebs in pyrite on the order of, you know, twenty to a hundred micron size, the kind of grain, grain size that should be able to be leached from pyrite. So that's how we see our gold. It's not within the calcopyrite, which a lot of people, it's, it's become accustomed to seeing.
Okay, the next question is from Michael. You might have already answered this, but when can the project get an initial resource on it? I think you've kind of covered that already, right?
Yeah, March of twenty twenty-one, yeah.
Okay. Victor is asking the company's current cash position. Are there any plans for financing in the near future?
We, our cash position is at, at six million, so we're fully funded for this current drill program. I mean, obviously there will be a financing in the future at some point. We've raised thirty million dollars from the start. We've been very successful in capital raisings. We're very aggressive with the exploration, so the money goes in the ground. And, you know, we're, we're super excited to continue testing these, these targets. So yes, there will be future financings. There's not, nothing immediately pending. We've got six million in the bank and we're, we're spending that, you know, very wisely on the drilling.
Okay, Jack is asking, is the ISR method of mineral recovery used for some urinating projects applicable to the copper, gold, silver recovery, especially, especially in broader zones where Breches are coalesced?
ISR, I think he's, I think he's thinking, or mentioned.
Yeah.
No, I wouldn't see that for a copper, gold, silver project. This would be conventional mining. And the good thing about that is like sub-level mining and open pit mining, that is so well-established. There's in Peru, Peru, as I mentioned, you know, there's, there's great access to technical expertise and mining experience in Peru and even within the Ancash region. So this would very much be a conventional type of operation.
Okay, another question from Victor. What's the relationship between the pipe and nearby lead zinc mineralization?
Well, we would love to know the answer to that. We, we think that the lead zinc silver mineralization is the distal expression of the intrusive magnetic hydrothermal system, which is solida. That's where the copper gold is and the more distal stuff is lead zinc silver. And that's a very, very common zonation you see. And it's, the scales are about right in terms of the extent of that zonation. So that's, you know, that's the idea, but we have no proof of that yet. But we are doing some research. We have a master's student that's studying solida and, and a lot of these topics are part of his thesis. And, you know, we're very, we're very, very looking very forward to seeing the conclusions of that research.
Okay, there's no other questions at the moment. I had a couple I might throw in here. David, can you break down, when you say fifteen thousand meters for this current drill program, how much of that is allocated to scout drilling versus sort of the definition or the infill drilling?
Yeah, I, there's no magic rule there. The, in general, we, we probably would allocate fifteen hundred to maybe two thousand meters of scout drilling before, you know, we stopped and then moved on. The, it, it's kind of based on our confidence, though. If, if we start drilling and we're seeing good mineralization, as long as we're confident that the drilling we're doing is going to contribute ultimately to a resource, then if we end up drilling three thousand meters in scout drilling, it, as long as all of that drilling counts, it doesn't really matter at the end of the day. What we have to be careful of is if we start drilling and we're not hitting good grades, but we haven't, you know, we're, we're still trying to find where good grades might be, then we have to be kind of careful because we don't obviously want to drill, you know, two or three thousand meters and not have that be included in the resource. But, you know, I can just say that, you know, when, when we see copper mineralization, it's really obvious, right? We can't predict the silver or gold grades. Other than if you're in good copper mineralization, there's, there's a good likelihood that you're going to have gold and silver going with it. But copper is the real key. We, it's real obvious when you have good copper mineralization.
Okay, Fernando, a question just came in from Fernando. He's asking, after the fifteen thousand meter drill program, would you be in a position to produce a resource estimate? I think we've kind of already touched on that again, right? The plan after, David, correct me if I'm wrong. The plan is after the fifteen thousand meter drill program, you would be doing the resource estimate in, in March? Looks like we lost Mr. Kelly. Let's give him a second to see if he comes back. You see, he's back here now. It might just take a moment to reload his camera, so bear with us, folks.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, there, you're back.
Okay, sorry, not sure what happened there, but I'm sorry. Can you repeat that question, John?
Yeah, for sure. So Fernando was asking, after the fifteen thousand meter drill program, would you be in a position to produce a resource estimate?
Yeah, that's the, that's the whole purpose of this fifteen thousand meter program. And, you know, we, we, that fifteen thousand meter, again, there's nothing magical about that number. It's just, it's a, it's a number we thought if Paloma East and West and Juan Carama are, are mineralized and we put that fifteen thousand meters into those targets, then that would take us, combined with the, the drilling we've already done, that would be sufficient for the first resource. And, you know, I, I, it's probably worth making the point that, you know, the first resource on this project, as you see, there are so many targets. We have ninety-two targets on the project. And that's putting all the geophysics, all the geochemistry, all the remote sensing, all the alteration mapping, everything together, ninety-two targets. And, you know, we see this project having a very long exploration lifecycle, okay? The upside potential is enormous. And that's just on the Brecha targets, right? That's, those ninety-two targets are primarily focused on the Brecha mineralization. There are a few other types of targets in there. But, so this initial resource, people need to think about this. Okay, we're just trying to demonstrate the concept, right? That these Brecha pipes can be economic, they can be big enough to mine, they can carry sufficient grade to support the type of mining methods that we're, we're contemplating. So, but then how do we, how do we increase the resource? Well, we go out and we explore more, more of the Brecha pipes. We extend the Brecha pipes at depth and the best way to do that is underground access. So the idea of getting an underground tunnel permitted, which you can do in Peru for exploration purposes, not exploitation, but exploration. And that's another great way of, of extending the resource from, say, the three fifty meter depth range down to six hundred or six fifty or seven hundred meters from underground drilling. So there's going to be a number of options that we can pursue to expand the resource beyond the initial resource.
Okay, and any sort of, I am curious as well, any sort of interest that's been, that's come your way from some larger mining companies in, you know, in the area or elsewhere about the project?
Absolutely, yeah. No, we, we've had extensive interest from major mining companies, some of the biggest copper miners in the world, very savvy underground miners, mid-tiers. You know, we've had a number of, of, of mining companies express interest in the project. So they're, they're watching, I mean, and they have to, right? I mean, discoveries are so hard to make these days. And I was there, I was, I was the exploration manager for, for the Americas for ten years, you know, with the job of going out and making a discovery. And it's, it's so hard to make a discovery. So the majors can't ignore the juniors, they need the juniors to be successful. And they need to be successful in their own right. And, and, you know, this is a discovery, there's no doubt about it. I mean, these Brecha pipes are much more extensive than people had envisioned before. And, you know, we're going to continue doing what we're doing, which is being very aggressive with the drill rig. So they're absolutely paying attention to what we're doing.
Okay, so we've gone about an hour or actually a little bit over. So I know Joanne is going to be on me to, to cut this off. For any of you still watching, just so you're aware, this, this is being recorded. So if you want to re-watch it again, or you, you know, you had to drop off earlier, it will be recorded. We try and aim to get it out, you know, usually within forty-eight hours. So, you know, keep an eye on the YouTube channel and we'll likely send everyone that registered an email with the recording. And the other thing is, assuming this works properly, when, when the webinar finishes, you'll be taken to a brief survey. And in the survey, one of the questions should be, you know, would you like the company to contact you for follow-up? So if you'd like Joanne or David to reach out and, and to do, have some follow-up discussion, you can answer yes to that question and then they'll, you know, they'll arrange to get in touch with you. So with that, David, thank you for your time this morning. Good presentation, very interesting project. And, you know, we'll look forward to seeing what some of the, you know, the, the new drill results have to show.
Absolutely, thank you, John. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Take care, everyone, be safe.